I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
All right, good morning to everyone. Special meeting, April 7, 2020. We got a few items on the agenda this morning. We're gonna start out with the bid openings. Ms. Roberts, you're gonna run this show. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, why don't you do that? If we could make the announcement for the public that Kerry is monitoring the email list, so on any action item today, if the public has questions or concerns, they can use that email. And the chairman's gonna give a pause before the question is called to move forward. So she is monitoring that in live time, real time.
All right, thanks, sir.
Okay, first bid is 192021. This is for the Morning Billards for the Eastern Ship Building, a ship building. We have several bids. First bid is Shoreline Foundation. The alternate bid is $909,830. Second bid is Infrastructure and Industrial Constructors Southeast. The alternate bid is $1,154,000. Total base bid is $1,597,400. The alternate bid is $1,158,160. Total base bid is $1,799,000. Total base bid is $1,588,404. Alternate bid is $870,156.
Chairman, if we could let Clay and Casey look at these and come back later in the meeting with a recommendation.
Okay. Turn those over to Smallwood and Ms. Casey. All right, moving on down to bid opening number 1920-23 CR 386.
Yes, Chairman, this is 1920-23. We have several bids for this, bidders for this bid as well. First bidder is CW Roberts Contracting. No alternate. Appears there's only original, no copies made.
Did you say no bid?
Yes. The last bidder for bid 192023 is GAC Contracting. My understanding from an email from our county engineer is that there's a bid amount inside the bid, and then they've written a deduction on the outside of their envelope. So I'll pass the envelope over to Casey and let her read that aloud as well after I open the bid.
on the outside, or what the purpose was?
I'm not sure the purpose of contractor called after they turned their bid in and told me that, so I passed the information on. But I didn't ask for, I don't know, I don't know the purpose.
So it was not written after the fact? It was written on the bid before they turned it in?
Yes, sir, yep.
Was that the time they turned it in? They wrote on it before I clocked it in. So the base bid minus?
I would do the base bid amount minus the deducted amount.
And that's the number.
And that would be?
Okay. Bid amount minus the deduction is $9,650,000.
Mr. Chairman, if we could let the county attorney sit with Mark, Clay, and Casey on these and come back later in the meeting with the recommendation.
Okay.
That concludes the bids, Chairman.
All right, thank you, Ms. Roberts. All right, so we're gonna turn those over to Smallwood and Ms. Casey, and they're gonna go and take them and review them. All right, moving on down to item four, we got a quasi judicial hearing, a review, variance request, Mr. Richard Peters, Mr. Collinsworth, you got it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we have two items this morning. First is a variance request from Mr. Richard Peters located at 103 Traceview Drive, parcel ID number 03816-505R, Section 4 Township 7 South, Range 11 West, Gulf County, Florida. He's requesting a variance with a carport into the 20-foot setback, Mr. Chairman. The PDRB recommends to the board by vote of 4-0 to deny the variance, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so PDRB recommended to deny?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, sir.
Please step forward.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I can, as Mr. Peters comes forward, just wanted to note again for the record, we spoke last week about the public meetings and the governor's executive order. And as you can see today, commissioners, you're keeping your distance. I think it's important for you each to note, as you go forward, the governor's executive order. We've had conference calls with the Florida Association of County Attorneys throughout the state, so every county's grappling with their public hearings and their public meetings. So we have the media here today, we have it live streaming, we have confirmation from Mr. Barfield in the back that it's live streaming. As Mr. Hammond said, we are taking in questions as best we can through what technology we have available to us here in Gulf County. So we'll continue to press forward and do everything we can to make these available. And I just appreciate Mr. Peters coming today. Again, the building's closed, he has an application, he has the right to be heard on it, and we're trying to keep the people in the back as best we can six feet apart, as Mr. Peters has done. And he's here today, and he's come in to make his applications. I appreciate you letting me put that on the record, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, while Mr. Peters comes forward, do you have any objections to waiving the quasi judicial hearing? Does anyone have any objections to waiving quasi judicial hearing? Come on up, Mr. Peters. All right, any objections to waiving quasi?
Motion to waive, second.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion on waiving? All right, anyone in our audience? Just hold on one second, Mr. Peters.
Ms. Summers is checking the email right as we speak. We have no emails.
All right. Any opposition to the motion to waive? All right, motion passes. Five and oh. All right, go ahead, Mr. Peters.
Okay.
State your name and your address for the record, please.
Richard Peters, 103 Traceview Way, Fort St. Joe.
Okay, go ahead.
The planning, the zoning planning committee that I went in, they all denied. Yes, I understand, I don't meet their four points. The problem being is, the property in question, and there's six lots involved in there, okay, we provide, if you have a picture, it shows the lot line where we own the road, we maintain the road, okay? That is a 30-foot ingress egress and utility easement. None of the utilities are in it, they're in that 20-foot setback, which is private property. Nowhere else along the Gulf Coast there, in them communities, does the property line go over the road. It's just these six lots. And all I'm looking to do is put a carport, not a permanent structure, a temporary structure, on top of the pavers now. Since the planning board meeting and this meeting, things have changed a little bit. The people next door have said that they will sell me that lot. But I still need to be able to put the carport back on top of my pavers for about three years to get that lot ready to do whatever, and then put the carport back.
All right, Mr. Collinsworth, you got anything?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
The subdivision was platted when it was designed to have that road in there. There's subdivisions, as Mr. McCrone knows, that indicate, and it's the same way. It's just the way the subdivision's designed, you have to meet your 20-foot setback from that ingress egress easement. And if this was allowed, the carport, the house itself sits on the 20-foot setback line. So every bit of this would go into the setback all the way up to the road, which has never been allowed. There were some issues with some impervious area, but it's not something that's never been done before. There's subdivisions that are like that. All ingress egress easements have to have the setback from the edge of that line. Their survey shows the setback line, and it clearly shows the whole thing being in there. So the planning board denied the request due to the fact that they have never allowed up to more than half into a setback anyway, and this whole thing would've been in setback plus the 30% impervious area as well. So that was some of the reasons they denied the request, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, board members, you got any questions? For staff? Okay. All right, one more time, what was the site the plant, was the PDRB recommended?
Mr. Chairman, the PDRB board voted 4-0 unanimously to deny the request.
Ms. Novak, you got anything you wanna add?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, Commissioners, I did hear Ted this morning, and I heard Mr. Peters indicate that he is working with his neighbors to buy the adjacent piece of property. And I know you referenced three years down the road to get it ready, but, you know, owning those, if he owned both those adjacent properties that came in, you know, it doesn't change what the county's requirements are in terms of setbacks. You know, but like I said, I guess in terms of a quasi judicial review, or even for a public hearing right now, you five commissioners have a decision to make based on our LDRs and our setbacks and our comp plan. If in the future those facts were different, then you could consider something like that. And I know, Mr. Peters, you said you're, I guess you're in works to try to purchase that adjacent piece of property. You know, that's not now, I guess. You don't own that one next to it, do you?
Not at the present moment, I will.
But you're working on it.
By the end of the month, I should own it. And then it has to be cleared and so forth and so on, and it's, you know, there's only so much money in the world. But the problem being is, according to what I've seen on the county's website for lots, okay, the lot lines for Gulf Air, Beacon Hill, Highland View, everybody's lot line goes up to the road, they do not go over the road. And it's not a road. It's my property. I furnish easement, because there is no such thing as landlocked property in Florida. I furnish the easement going back. So bottom line is, I'm paying taxes on 50 feet by 100 feet that is useless. You know, I can understand a permanent structure not being there because the utilities go in there, but this is not a permanent structure. It's just four bolts, takes an hour, put it on wheels, and it moves anywhere where I want it to move, provided it's on hard surface.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Peters. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the reason I was bringing it up is because you really have two issues. You have the side setback requirement, you see that between the two adjacent properties in that subdivision. So you see the sideline in the setback requirement. And Mr. Peters just indicated to you where the 30-foot ingress egress is. That's for his neighbors to get in and out as well. So while I am not gonna dispute or even discuss today where he owns too, you know, assuming that he says he owns across the street, which is fine, take it for what it is, it still doesn't negate the fact that it still has to be open for ingress egress for his other five neighbors. So if he were to buy another parcel adjacent to it, you'd still have four other parcel owners that would have to come in up and down. So that roadway's never gonna be built upon. So for all intents and purposes, you still have, the lot line is really adjacent to the road where his property stops, where you can't put something to impede his neighbors from coming in and out. So while I acknowledge the fact that he's buying the adjacent property, or he's representing that he's in the works to do that, you still have the other four, if he buys two of the six, he still has the other four property owners, and you have to take into consideration the precedent. Those four criteria on the front of your form here, and Mr. Peters indicated that they denied, you revised it four or five years ago, it just needs to meet one of those four requirements, doesn't need to meet all four, just needs to meet one of them. And I know the PDRB said it did not meet those four, or any of the four. But again, I would say the precedent you put into place, regardless of the side setback if he were to buy the adjacent property, you still have to consideration the precedent. You heard Mr. Collinsworth said that he's not aware of that being done anywhere else in the county where you build up onto the road. So I want that on the record, acknowledging Mr. Peters is buying that adjacent property, but that may factor into whether or not he goes through with it, obviously, of what you all do today.
Go ahead, Ms. Collinsworth.
And, Mr. Chairman, and be aware that, with all due respect to Mr. Peters, he did not give access to the landowners down the road. That is a platted road on that subdivision. It was platted from day one, so no owner has given any other owner access down that road. It is a private road per the plat, so that was a, that is a platted road on the subdivision that every owner must abide by that 20-foot setback from that easement. And it's not an utility easement, it's an ingress egress easement with utilities in it. So even if Mr. Peters does purchase the lot next door, he still has to abide by the 20-foot setback from the front and the seven and a half by the sides, and we would definitely take his application when that land is purchased, and he can most certainly now put it on there. But as of today, he's over his impervious area, he is inside a setback, and the PDRB voted 4-0 to deny the variance, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Novak, you want to, about the formal reading and the?
Yes, sir. I mean, if Mr. Peters has nothing else, and if there's nothing else from the public in terms of hearing through, I'll go through the LDR recital for 2.05.
All right, Mr. Peters, you got anything?
On the 30% impervious, okay, when I went in front of the special magistrate for this, when it's all started, okay, the code enforcement has dropped 30% impervious for the simple reason the 30% impervious, everything that was done there was done with permit through the county, okay? They changed pavers from non-pervious to pervious space, hence making it now 30%, you know, I'm over the 30%. But it was already there prior to them changing it. So the code enforcement dropped that portion of it. The only thing that they said was, I didn't get a permit, which I did not do, because I didn't think it was gonna be, I didn't know how it was gonna anchor it, so it went and went all the way. And two, it's in a 20-foot setback. And like I said, it's not a permanent structure.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the county has no objection to leaving the pavers. You do not have to have a permit to pour concrete or place pavers, and that's why they were put in there. But we do not, and have not, and will not, unless the board directs us to permit any structures, whether it's temporary or not, we don't allow sheds which are not permanent, mobile homes are not permanent, they can be picked up and moved as well. Nothing is allowed inside that setback without a variance. So as far as the 30%, a lot of people max out their 30% with a gravel driveway, and then they come back and pour concrete and put pavers because there's no permit required for that. But when you start trying to put a structure on your property, and you have to go through the permit and process, this is where it gets called, and this is where this one was called. So the county has no objections to the pavers being there because they were there prior to the LDR change, but definitely not the carport, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all right, thanks, sir. Anything else, Mr. Peters?
Nope, I just thought, probably.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, right now it's 9:34, there's still no other emails coming in through the counties to Ms. Summers, so just wanna note that before we move on to the LDR reading.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Could I direct it over to Mr. Collinsworth? Mr. Collinsworth, looking at this, we're talking about this Traceview Way.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Peters owns this 103, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And he is anticipate buying 107 right on down, but you said this Traceview Way was platted?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, and it's 30 feet?
Yes, sir.
30 feet wide. All right, now I'm looking on this, and Mr. Peters wants to put the, this temporary carport just right up to the line.
Up to the 30-foot.
It's 20. Up to it. Even if he was to purchase two, three, four, all the way down, it's still, you can't encroach into there.
That is correct.
All right. And Georgia, what is it, Georgia Avenue, that's again, I don't know where all this is. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, Mr. Novak.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if there's nothing else from Mr. Peters for the public here, and if you wanna? I guess that indicated there's no? I guess I indicated there's nothing here. Um, the folks in attendance are essential personnel, so I can move on if you, uh, the Commission would like me to, I can read the, uh, section thirty-four of the LDR.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Peters, you, you can sit?
Yeah, you can, you can have a seat, Mr. Peters.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, uh, shall review the LDR standard for granting a variance for Commissioners' reference and consideration during a quasi judicial hearing, which has been waived today, so it's a public hearing. A written application for the variance is submitted to the Planning Department requesting a hardship exists based on one of the following. Your PDRB met on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, voted four oh, that it did not meet one of the four sections under section thirty-four. Uh, they read as follows, "The special conditions circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structures or buildings involved, which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district. One, or the literal interpretation of provisions of the code would deprive the applicant rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of these regulations, or the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, or the granting of the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privileges denied by these regulations to other land structures or buildings in the same district." Those are up for your consideration, Commissioners. If you feel, after the public hearing and the submission of substantial competent evidence, that it meets one of those four criteria, then you should entertain a motion to that effect. If you feel as though that the substantial competent evidence submitted today during this public hearing does not meet one of those four criteria, then you should entertain a motion to that effect as well.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, as a recommendation of the PDR Board, I put motion on the floor that we deny this request.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel? To go along with the PDRB recommendation to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner Rich. Any, any further board discussion on this? All right. Now, anyone in the audience on this deny? Any emails, Ms. Summers?
No, sir.
All right. Any opposition against the motion? All right, motion to deny passes five and oh.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, following that on the second page of the form that you have utilized the last five years, it will go through, um, you, with the, uh, motion of the board, we can waive the reading. It speaks to the completeness, the substantial competent evidence, um, the notice requirements, and any other further findings, uh, before the requirements of granting the variance. If you waive the reading and accept the PDRB's recommendations that these conditions have been met, I'd ask you to entertain a motion on the third page, which says then that you will deny the variance based on the substantial competent evidence.
All right, Board members, y'all need, y'all want Mr. Novak to read it, or we can make a motion to waive the reading?
Uh, motion to waive.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on waiving? Any emails, Ms. Summers?
No, sir.
Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. If you will, then waive in the reading of that. You'll accept, uh, based on your motion, the, the recommendations and the findings of the PDRB that substantial competent evidence, the completeness, and the, uh, proper notice requirements were met. Again, they met on March sixteenth. Um, this was originally scheduled before you had to cancel due to the COVID emergency declaration, and it was noticed and rescheduled in the local paper for today, uh, April seventh, two thousand twenty. Uh, and we'll have this signed up and provided to the Planning Department. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir. Moving on down to preliminary final plat, Mr. Collinsworth.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, last on the list, we have a subdivision preliminary final plat. It's subdivision name's Bay Club from High and Tight Holdings LLC. It's a land use of mixed commercial slash residential low density location, parcel ID number zero six two four eight dash zero nine six R, section thirty-six township eight south range eleven west Gulf County, Florida, at the intersection of State Road thirty-eight and the Country Club Road. It's a thirteen lot subdivision with a total size of four point two six acres with a developed size of three point oh three acres, Ms. Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on this item? Come on up, sir. Do you have any objections with us waiving the quasi judicial hearing?
No, sir.
All right, entertain a motion if we may.
Some move.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on waiving? All right, motion to waive passes five and oh.
Ms. Chairman, there's nothing in the email with regards to that motion.
Okay, thanks, sir. All right, go ahead, Mr. Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I won't repeat what Mr. Collinsworth, uh, said there. Um, I'm here to, I'm here to represent High and Tight Holdings LLC. Um, the proposed development will feature a paved roadway with an eighty-four foot diameter cul-de-sac to allow ease of access and maneuverability to turn vehicles around. In addition, the subdivision will feature a six inch water main, grinder pumps, one per lot, connected to a two inch force main pumping to the existing ten inch force main located on the north side of Country Club Road. The proposed water main within the subdivision will include a new fire hydrant installed at the end of the asphalt roadway. Um, it will also include roadside swells to take care of all the stormwater. Um, as far as the preliminary plat for the density, there's three point zero one nine acres of uplands, uh, which is a full amount of density, which equals twelve point zero seven eight, and one point two three acres of wetlands. Um, taking into account our twenty percent there, it's point nine eight eight for a total of thirteen point zero six six allowable units. Um, for the final plat portion of this, uh, we do have our water sewer permits. Um, those have been received from DEP. So we have all the permits, all the final construction plans have been turned into the county.
All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Collinsworth?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. The PDRB recommended by a vote of four oh to approve. The, the only contingency we have is we need, before the DO is issued, that we have the letter of their escrow account for that. Uh, all other questions and concerns have been met. So PDRB recommended four oh to approve the plat, Ms. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Summers, any more, any more emails on, anything on this?
No, sir.
All right. All right, any questions, uh, Board members for the applicant?
If I could, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Collinsworth, uh, for the record, no, no variances, no anything on this property?
No, sir, they haven't, they haven't applied.
Met all requirements.
They, they met all requirements. It's just one that's exceeded the number of lots that would be, um, done by just the Planning Board and the TAC Committee and the Planning Department. So it must come before the board because it's a final plat, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, one more time, Mr. Collinsworth, you say the PDRB voted four oh?
They voted four oh to approve the preliminary final plat, Ms. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Novak?
Mr. Chairman, um, if there's no objection, I'll go ahead and move through the LDR requirements for your final consideration of this plat. Um, the Planning Department shall check the provisions of the county subdivision ordinance twenty, two thousand one, six, two thousand five sixteen, and the LDR below are deemed applicable through the motion that this subdivision preliminary, I'm sorry, final plat application based on the record presented to this county commission. Gulf County subdivision ordinance codified incorporating Gulf County LDRs, Article Three, establishes standards for granting the subdivision and plat approval. Sections one through three subdivision and final plat approvals referenced herein and used to verify and establish all requirements have been met for this commission to use in its consideration during this quasi judicial, which has been waived, public hearing, whether to, this approval shall be issued. Uh, the commission has reviewed and considered the following conditions and affirmations by motion and vote on this noticed hearing for the subject subdivision final plat application to state the following. The first is for your consideration, which you've already voted on, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Gulf County Commission and the Chairman have established the requirements of the hearing and thereafter proceeded with the noticed hearing. Um, and alternatively, you have waived those requirements for a quasi judicial. With no objections by the applicant, the county staff or public attendees, and the commission at that time, the hearing was preceded under a general public hearing, you voted five oh to move forward. If you turn to the second page, the Gulf County Commission accepts the Planning Department's statement of completeness for the subdivision of preliminary final plat application. The second of your vote would be the Gulf County Commission deems the record submitted as competent and substantial evidence to support the decision of the commission for this, uh, final plat approval. Third, this Gulf County Commission accepts the Planning Department's statement and representation that notice of the hearing was provided in accordance with the provisions under our ordinance and the LDRs for the final plat application and pursuant to the permanent public notice for these hearings affixed to the County Courthouse and Administration Building effective November nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, which provides that public notice, all parties shall be permitted to present evidence, opportunity to be heard on the matter, cross-examine witnesses, uh, prior to any commission acts. Fourth, this commission shall make a finding that the requirements for a subdivision or final plat approval have been met by the applicant for the subdivision, that the reasons set forth in the application justify the granting of the application. Five, the commission further makes a finding that the issuance of the future development order, which Mr. Collinsworth alluded to, shall be based upon full and adequate hearing and consideration of all evidence and testimony provided on the record, and shall be incorporated herein for purposes of these findings. If you find those and accept those recommendations of the PDRB, your final vote would be then to, following a review and consideration of the final plat in this hearing format, in conjunction with the application of the above referenced subdivision ordinance and the LDRs guidelines to the submitted record, in its entirety deemed as substantial competent evidence, the county commission would then motion and vote to either approve, deny, or table the final plat approval, and to proceed to file an application for the subdivision and final plat with a development order upon the completion of all additional requirements and conditions set forth by these hearings and the related Gulf County LDRs. Mr. Collinsworth alluded to that additional conditions for the issuance of a DO, so those would be up for your consideration of accepting the PDRB's recommendations. And then that would be the first vote, Mr. Chairman. The second would be then to either approve, deny, or table this final plat.
All right, guys, you want to accept the PDRB's recommendation?
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel. Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion? Any emails, Ms. Summers?
No, sir.
Anyone in the, in the audience? All right, any opposition? All right, that motion passes five and oh.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, the second would, the vote would be at the bottom of page two, which would be the findings of this, uh, Board of County Commissioners with regards to the application for final plat approval, subject to the conditions of the Planning Department for the issuance of a development order.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners, approve, deny, or table?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel to approve. Second, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public? Any emails, Ms. Summers?
No, sir.
All right, any opposition? Motion passes five and oh. All right, moving on down to item number five, local state of emergency, emergency beach closure extension. Mr. Hammond?
Ms. Chairman, I'd recommend that we extend the, the beach closure and just tell me when we want to date it, till the end of the month, or I think the governor's order is through, is it the second of May? I, I would be fine with the thirtieth, and, and we can address it again at the, at a future meeting.
So we understand it to April thirtieth?
Yes, sir. Unless the board decided to, to cut it shorter than that, uh, I'm, I'm hoping we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. We've been blessed that we haven't had the death and the misery that New York and some of these other places, New Orleans and, and, uh, South Florida, especially Palm Beach and Broward, they have, have had. Uh, the public has been patient, especially the locals. Uh, most of the folks are following the law now. Uh, some folks weren't, and I think they got shamed into, into following it. But, uh, again, at some juncture, everybody's going to go stir crazy. But for the, for the, so far, we've been able to keep, you know, contaminated folks out. And, and we always said all along, it would not be a local, it would be somebody that went somewhere and came back. They traveled, they traveled. And again, the, the horror for us is just a couple, just a hundred plus miles up the road is the highest per capita anywhere in the United States, and that's Albany, Georgia. And, and that spread, you know, basically from a funeral, uh, you know, one of the most innocent things you could think of that would spread this disease. And I think their death count is now over thirty.
So it's over forty?
Over forty. And it's keeping, you know, contaminated folks out, uh, you know. But again, th- they will have to come a day where we get back to normal, and hopefully that we can see that coming sooner. So I would recommend the thirtieth. If, if things miraculously clear up in the next couple of weeks, we could shorten it. But I would say that the thirtieth is a good starting point.
If I could, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just to go along with what Michael said, and I, I'd love to hear from the sheriff too. He, he's had to enforce this deal, and it's, it's not been easy. But, uh, as of yesterday, we still had people trying to come into county that I know the sheriff's had to deal with and that are supposed to quarantine fourteen days upon arrival, not doing that. And we've had issues with, uh, uh, homeowners, uh, property owners renting their houses basically under the table, for lack of a better word, uh, taking money to rent their houses off the record. So we definitely still have people trying to come into county. I'd, you know, I, I'd love to open the beach as quick as we can. And, but, uh, uh, I think right now, it's, it's just the best interest of everybody in the community that we, we, you know, go, what Michael said, go, uh, you know, I think we're on the downhill, but, but I think we've, uh, uh, the decisions we made were wise and, and to limit exposure to our community. And, anyway, that's what I think, Ms. Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir. Yes, Mr. Rogers?
Uh, on that, uh, the Highland View boat ramp area, we've been having some issues there. Uh, if the sheriff would also talk on that when he comes up and speaks, uh, we need to figure out a way we can close that off to the public. So.
All right, come on up, Sheriff.
Thank you. As, as you said, we've got a lot of locals that are doing a great job and abiding, um, by your orders, governor's orders. And, uh, we still have a few that just want to buck the system. So, uh, we are getting several calls out. We're sending deputies out to make contact with the people that are coming in. A lot of times, it actually ends up being the, the property owners there that's coming from somewhere else and really not diving into the, the property owners other than let them know there is mandatory quarantine. And, uh, but if there's guests there that are not property owners, we're asking them, uh, per your order to leave and get a good response. Um, but, uh, you know, we're, we're going to continue to have those problems. We understand that. We're taking them case by case. Deputies are monitoring them and, uh, going back and checking up on them. And they're finding people are, are, are hidden or, or warning. I mean, the alternative is to be criminally charged and taken to jail. So, uh, I, I think it's a lot easier just to return back on. Um, but, uh, a- as Commissioner Rogers says, we are having a lot of problems at, at the Highland View Boat Ramp. Uh, people are accessing the, the park there in order to get to the city beach. And, uh, we, we have had to, um, cite someone this weekend. Um, it's dangerous for people to get in there and get on the rocks and try to, because there is a sandy portion of the beach there. And, and people being on that portion of the beach there, um, does constitute a violation of your beach closure ordinance. So, uh, in order for them to do it, they have to navigate down the rocks and go in the water and around, and that's just dangerous. I mean, to me, I think the best thing to do would be to close the park. I know there's some construction going on there now. With that, obviously allow them to continue in there. There's two businesses there on the left to continue to allow those folks in there. But in essence, what you're doing is, um, with the park being open, we're allowing folks access to the beach that they're not supposed to be on there. So, uh, uh, with your consideration on that, appreciate, uh, closing the park. And, uh, if, uh, I'll have my lieutenant and Mark get together and go out there and figure out how we can, uh, close it off as, as your wishes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Any questions?
All right, any questions for the sheriff?
Okay, thank y'all.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, so, uh, Board members, what you want, you guys want to, in reference to, I mean, because I, I have heard they was down there swimming also. So, I mean, the, the easiest fix would probably be to figure out this way we can close, I mean, close that park and somehow block it off.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
Uh, didn't the governor's order say all public parks closed, or?
Uh, no, sir. They're, they're, I believe that state parks have been closed by the governor. Um, but again, from the federal level to the state level, they're trying to defer to local governments, and what is, is appropriate and fits. So it, that local declaration that you all adopted on the eighteenth, you all have the discretion. Like I said, if you feel as though there's hot spots or certain attractions within your community under that declaration, you have the ability to close that park or that boat ramp. So you have that discretion to do that here in Gulf County or move forward accordingly. And you'd make a motion to do that under your emergency declaration, and we'd add that as your Order twenty dash oh four, along with the extension of your beach closure.
If I could, Ms. Chairman, is it ju- just to reinforce what we recently talked about, we don't believe for a minute that going on the beach, that you're going to get a virus. Uh, our reason for closing the beaches was, was purely the attraction that it draws, and to limit the exposure for, for our community. And that's it. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right. I, I, and, and to go along with what the sheriff said about how they're trying to get, if they're on, it's, uh, that's, that's pretty dangerous if, I wouldn't be on those rocks and trying to, trying to get around. to get around to the sandy part anyway, so, I mean, it's, I think we might need to probably look at blocking it off and closing it. You got a recommendation?
Well, there's no reason for anybody to be at the boat ramp, they've got a crane down there they're constructing, the bathrooms are closed, so the only reason would be for folks trying to get on the beach there. And I think the initial thought was to let people fish, but that is the most dangerous spot to swim in Gulf County. That is, that is a god-awful current right there to, really from Radfield's all the way out going into the bay, that is, that is dangerous area, and so we could cut it off there, at Angel Fish and whatever, I can't remember the name of the road there, but as you come off there in that curve, we could just barricade it off and stop folks from going down there and parking, because they don't need to be around that equipment anyway. With them, they are still working on the boat ramp, it's going to be nice when they get through, but if that's what the board wants to do, we can cut that off there at Angel Fish at the entrance.
Okay. All right, we need a motion to close it? We're going to close the park, period, right?
We got an email.
Okay, okay, in reference to this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, read it.
It is from Pat Strayer, and her question is, is under the bridge considered a park?
I don't know. The county's boat ramp is on, the state has given us access, but it's really state right-ofway under that bridge is really state-controlled. The only portion that the county owns is what used to be, I can't remember the name of the street, it's either Parker or, it's Parker. So we have the Parker right-ofway that is either sixty or sixty-six feet that where the actual boat ramp is, that's all that the county owns. It's private property to the northeast and to the southwest, it's all state. And then, of course, Saint Joe Paper Company owns property out toward the bay further out, but what's actually under the bridge is really state right-ofway that the state owns. Now, we've had access to park for the boat ramp and for folks to, you know, to walk down there and fish, but technically, it's state property under the bridge, under the actual physical George Tapper Bridge, just belongs to the state. But the, the county owns the road.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's part of the park.
We can cut the road off.
So if we cut the road off, it cuts access to the right-ofway under the bridge and to the beach where the, where the problems lie.
I know the city cut their access off on their side, so we need a motion to close that road off.
I just need direction from the board, y'all tell me what you want to do, and I'll do it.
I agree. I agree, we need to probably close it off. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Yes, sir. And the main reason is, is so the sheriff's department can get a handle on this, you know, they have a hard enough time as it is trying to enforce some of this stuff, and trying to make it a little easier on them to do what they need to do. With that, I'll make a motion to close it.
Okay. I got a motion by Commissioner Rogers to close that road off. You got a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel, any further board discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I know everybody has mentioned it, just wanted to make sure that that construction, that still allows the contractors to get down there, they've got a timeline and.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Any other discussion, board members? Any more emails on this? All right, anyone else in the public? Any opposition to that motion to close that road off? All right, motion passes five and oh. All right, now let's get back to the beach closure to April 30th. I need a motion to extend that beach closure.
So, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
That was you, Mr. Rogers?
Yep.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. All right, any further board discussion on this?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, you have any issues with us closing that?
No, sir.
Good.
All right, anyone in the, in the audience? Any emails on this, Ms. Summers?
No, sir.
All right, motion to extend passes. Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh. All right, moving on down to, who's running with number six?
If we can skip that, they're still reviewing those beds.
Okay.
That's good.
You got the four, sir?
Give you a quick update on the courthouse, we thought it couldn't get any worse. I don't know, I think Commissioner McCrone first would call me. We had a water break in the upstairs judges' chambers of the courthouse during the night, Sunday night, Monday morning, and when, I guess Raymond found it about six o'clock, it had flooded the vast majority of the courthouse. The clerk was spared, so the clerk's living right. When I called her and gave her a panic, it was probably more than she wanted to hear, but the upstairs judges' chambers and whatnot completely flooded. Disaster. Of course, what is up always comes down, and Mitch Burke's office was flooded, some of Ms. Shirley's office was flooded, all of the public defender's office was flooded, this county judge, McFarland's chambers were flooded, all of our new ceiling tile destroyed. Again, if the computers work when they have 100% humidity, that'll be a blessing, but anyway, we have gone in, for whatever reason, one of the lavatory supply lines corroded and broke, while they were trying to repair that one, the one on the backside of that wall broke in the wall, so we are in the process of tearing out and repairing all of the lines where we don't have this problem in the future from corrosion, but there's, I think just in that one area, there's nine bathrooms in the offices, and not including the public bathrooms, but we've got a contractor in and got our insurance sending a special cleanup crew to come down, and they're supposed to look at, and I think Jack Housman's going to go in with him today, his office, and look at some of the structural damage. The initial estimate was somewhere around $150,000 worth of damage. Again, that's after water-only running that we know of for about six hours. If it had happened on a Saturday, it could have been much worse. So anyway, Mark may have something else to add, he's still looking at those beds, but I will let him talk to you about that. Again, the good thing is, we do have insurance, and it is a sizable deductible, but just more, more to handle on our plate that we didn't really think we had time to handle, so. I'll talk to you about the city issue, and I can tell you about it, my wit's in with this situation. I don't like game-playing, I don't like arm-twisting, I don't like craziness, but we're to the point, the board has got to speak with one voice and tell the city what our situation is, and I can tell you, this annexation crap has got to stop, and it will not stop until we come up with an interlocal where we can all agree that on future annexed properties, the density will remain what the maximum the county's is. We're fixing to have a, I can't think of a nice word to say, a problem in Highland View that we cannot do anything about. Now, what, nine, 10 months ago, 11 months ago, the city and the county met right here in this room. We had it packed full of people in Highland View opposed to 40 units an acre on the old school site, and basically, the city commission told the folks from Highland View, all except the former mayor, who said that he supported them, but four of the city commissioners that were there that day told the people of Highland View to go to hell, okay? Then we go a couple months down the road, the developer pulled out, we threatened a suit, we go a couple months down the road, and the county requests the city to have a workshop to talk about future annexations and how we could work out a deal where if the city wanted to annex it, fine, but there's not going to be any more high-density, no more, you know, 20, 30, 40 units an acre going forward. And nicely, or not nicely, the mayor told the county to go pound sand, there was no reason to have a workshop. Now we get on down the road to this five-acre piece in the county, across from the Sacred Heart Hospital, for lack of a better description, and it's gone back and forth, and, you know, the city has cut some deal with this developer that needs a portion of that property supposedly for a dollar store. It's in the county, they come to the county to permit it, they go to the city to talk about impact fees on sewer, and it comes back that, oh, the county was ugly to them, and they just, they want, they want to annex into the city to pay extra taxes just because the county was ugly to them. So we've had several discussions with those attorneys for the developer, and we didn't get any real good answers, but they had to agree with us that there's no reason, if you don't want higher density, to annex into the city just to pay city taxes on something that is commercial in the county, the city's exactly the same. So I think we need to put it on the record that the county's going to oppose any future annexation until we have a deal with the city that says, all right, if you want to annex something voluntarily, fine, but the maximum density is going to be what it would be in the county, because I can tell you, developers are greedy, some of them just like to make money, they're capitalists, and when they see the county has two units an acre on the bay, and three units an acre on the Gulf, and four units of acre anywhere else in the county, and they go to the city of Port St. Joe, and they say, we'll give you 40, we'll give you 10 times, and apparently, the city, the majority of the city commission, if not all of the city commission, has no problem with high-density. I think the people of Gulf County are opposed to high-density, I think that's why we've got low-density in the county. They've never had high-density in the city until recently, and the guinea pig's going to be the Robertson parcel that just sold in Highland View, and I've seen the plans, they're going to put 40-something units on a little over an acre in a subdivision in Highland View that's been there since the 20s, and it's surrounded completely by county roads on three sides and Highway 98 on the front. It's going to be a not-traffic nightmare, it's going to be a stormwater nightmare, and all of the problems is going to be the county's because it's all, the community around it is Highland View, but the city's going to get taxes and tap fees and whatnot off of 40-something units on a tiny piece of property. That is not what I think that we want. I don't think y'all want that. So my suggestion to the board is to let them know, they've got a, they've got a meeting at 12, and apparently, the developer is waiting to determine on what y'all are going to do based on what they're going to do if they're going to pull that. My recommendation is that we send the message that on any future annexations, we've got to have an agreement that you cannot increase the density, and I think that will stop the problem, but they're always going to shop higher-density. I mean, it's just a, just a simple math, you get four units in the county, or you can get 40 in the city, you're always going to go for the 40 over the four, and this hodgepodge of checkerboard that they've done is unruly, to say the least. I mean, figure out just for the sheriff's situation, are they in the county or the city? Which side of Highway 98 are you on in Highland View determines which, where you are, and we've created enclaves with Windmark Beach is in the county, it's totally surrounded by city, this Windmark, jump across the street, it's not in, except Barefoot Cottage is is. So again, we should have drawn this line a long time ago, but now is the time to stop this spread of high-density development in the county, because it's coming if we don't stop it.
All right, thanks, sir. Commissioners, I want to add anything?
Please, Mr..
Okay.
I need to address the administrator.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond, listen to you. The five acres, are they excluded, are they included in this proposal you're making that we lower that?
I would, I would include that in any future. Yes, sir.
It is included, no question. All right. I just want that for clarification.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
From the day forward.
All right, thank you.
And just to clarify before we go forward, the current position of the board is that we will oppose that and have given me and the county attorney permission to file injunction to stop that. That is your current vote, unanimous vote of six or eight weeks ago, month, month and a half ago. So that's where we are, but I think it's time that we have an adult conversation about the problem of annexation, and that what the county's problem is. It's not that we're trying to hurt the city and about getting tax revenue, it's not that we're trying to bully the city, it's not that whatever, it is, we do not want high-density, and the city commission, as it's currently constituted, and again, most of those guys have been my friends, I may have made an enemy or two in the last couple of days, but they do not have a problem that's currently constituted with high-density, especially when they're putting it in county neighborhoods. Now, I doubt that folks on Monument Avenue would like a high-density development right in their neighborhood. They haven't done that yet, but, you know, the right developer hasn't come with the right money to say, all right, I'm going to, you know, build 80 units and give you a couple hundred thousand dollars in tap fees and some tax money, and we'll do it, but there is a desire on that board, of the majority of that board, if not everybody, to do high-density developments of 30 and 40 units an acre, and that is not conducive with anything that Gulf County's ever stood for, and certainly not conducive with anything that the county and county regulations are. So I think that's our problem. We're pro-development, Gulf County's always been pro-development, we're pro-business. That business can come to the county just as easy it can come to the city, and if we limit it to, on the density side, there's no problem, but that property's not going to be owned by the dollar stores, it's going to be leased, and they're not using that whole piece of property for a dollar store. And once you allow that to be annexed, you lose control to stop an increase of density, and that's the only logical reason for annexing this property is for higher-density.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hammond, I'm totally opposed to, you know, giving up our right, once we give it up, it's gone, and this just hopscotching around, you know, things that are no value, we don't want it, we just want to select what we want and do what we want to. Once we give up our, you know, our authority or control over it, it's gone, it's gone. And yes, I'm not, I would like to see something there, but I just, I think this dollar store is just a front. Honestly, that's my opinion, and I'm entitled to it, I think it's a front for something else, for something else. And we need to, until we nail down and they want to agree to some of our terms, it's not about their terms, it's about both sides' terms, but until we get something nailed down, it's just hopping all over the, next thing you know, they run out to White City and grab something, or run to Jones Home City, they already got some out there, run out on St. Joe Beach and grab something. It's got to stop, and the place to stop it's right here. If we're going to give it, they'll take it. I'm through, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. McCrone.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To go along with what Michael said, and we beat this to death, and I've talked to the mayor, and I think he's called some of the rest of us, and I'm not for high-density, and I've told him that, and unless, and I'll say it this morning, unless we can get an agreement with the city to limit density on these annexations, I'm not going to go along with it, because the five acres that we're talking about, what we're saying to build the dollar store, acre and a half at the most, so what are we going to do with the rest? And I know my, the First Baptist has bought the corner property, and you're going to put high-density, you know, possibly on that other acreage, but what I'm saying is, if we can't, we need to get an agreement with the city to limit density, I'm not for high-density, and I don't think the majority of people in my district are for high-density at all, and, you know, we need to get that in place. So, that's all I have.
All right. You want to add something? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have seen the site plan on that, excuse me, two acres of the five is what the dollar store would be leasing. The majority will be facing 98 right there, directly across from the college, which would, which would be the high-density area, because the density for the commercial, for the dollar store will be the same for the county versus the city, so there's no change there. So something, there's something in the works on the other three acres would be the only reason that you would want to do a land use change or try to get into the city, so only two acres of that five is what would be leased by the dollar store. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any more questions? All right, I agree, let's, if we can, work up something in a local agreement, we're against high-density, and then let's get it in, right? But I, I mean, I understand all, I mean, all the arguments, like I say, the mayor called me also, but like I say, to have a dollar store would be great, but for the other three acres, if they, if, you know what I'm saying, if they, they show me a Toyota and then... they, they show me a Toyota, and then all of a sudden I get a Cadillac, it's totally different. You might say one thing, but then it's another thing. I mean, and like I say, these developers will say anything. Just like they told that stuff in Highland View, they were saying anything. And, but I agree. Let's get, if we can get an interlocal agreement saying that we won't, you know, they won't go up in density, then I'm all for it. You wanna add anything else?
And, Mr. Chairman, if we could get Michael or Jeremy, let's reach out to the city, and if they want to get an agreement in place far as density, I'm completely fine with that, but I'm not going for thirty or forty units an acre. I'm just not gonna do it.
And Commissioner, I'm one million percent for coming to an agreement with the city, but they're not gonna agree to it because it's the whole point of annexing. Why would you want to annex into the city Port St. Joe if you couldn't get something for it? I mean, that's the carrot they've always been offering these folks. And again, I, I am shocked that, that pretty much everybody on that board has no problem with high density. They're, they're looking at tap fees, and they're looking at tax revenue, and, and we're fixing to get to see an example of it in Highland View that we can do nothing about because it was annexed long ago. But, you know, when you served on the city commission, did y'all have forty-eight, forty units an acre when you were there? When did the city change their rules to allow such high density? I mean, that is, it was news to me, you know, when, in my days at the building department a hundred years ago, it was, the city had seven units an acre was their maximum density, which is almost twice the county's, but it's still not high density. But, but yes, we will make them that offer. I'll get the county attorney to reach out to their attorney and make them that offer, but, but there's...
Well, just so, just so everybody knows, we have reached out to them. We're doing it again today. And, you know, we've all been, I've always been, tried to be pro-city. I think Commissioner Quinn has too. We, we both have part of the city in our districts, but, but, you know, to, to go with thirty or forty units an acre, I think is, is crazy, especially in neighborhoods. So, anyway, everybody knows at this point, on the record this morning, that we, we, we are reaching out to the city.
Yeah. Let's do our due diligence.
Okay.
Do what we're supposed to do. Reach out to them. Interlocal agreement. If they say no, we did our part.
If, if we could, if we could get that in the form of a motion as far as what the, what the county's going to oppose any future annexations until we have a solid agreement with the city about, which, which would probably require them to strike R three and R four. There's, the attorney can...
The interlocal that you've had in the past, you all familiar with the ones you've entered? There's been revisions to them in the past. There's been amendments. Some of them been honored, some of them haven't been. Okay? There was a subject of a lawsuit two years ago with regards to interlocal agreements. So, I would say it would be a temporary remedy for the county and the city, but going forward, the solution would be, is they would remove those two classifications. So, that would be the permanent fix between the county and city that they remove those density designations. But in the interim, while they moved in that direction with public notices and the proper hearings, it would be that interlocal agreement.
All right. So, Mr. Hammond, what you say you, you want to see in that interlocal so we can get a motion for it? The board is, the board is against any future...
Any future annexations until we, till, till we eliminate the possibility that the city's going to do high density, or excuse me, density increases on county annexed property. The maximum density would be the same as the county. The city could annex it, get the taxes off of it, provide the services if they want extra law enforcement, streetlights, all the things that come with being, living in the city Port St. Joe or any city. But that we cap the density at the county's level to stop these shoppers, these developer shoppers saying, I'll go annex it in the city and I can get a ten times density bonus. That really becomes critical when you start talking about when they go towards Summit Bio and the Cape, and when they go towards St. Joe Beach, as you just said. Then it becomes even bigger because it's not four units an acre, it's two and three units an acre. So, the, the density bonus is even bigger. We need to stop this hodgepodge, as you call it, and, and again, we're not playing in their sandbox. They're coming into our sandbox on this particular bill. We're not, we're not trying to do something to the city that's already in the city. We're talking about stop taking county-controlled property, putting it in the city in order to increase density. So, that would, that would be my recommendation is that, that, that we keep the same density requirements. The maximum in the county would be the same on any annexed property in the city.
All right. If I could, Mr. Chairman, one more thing, so everybody knows that we're not opposed at all to this dollar store being built.
We're pro.
Yeah. And, and so everyone knows that we, we, we just don't want the high density residential density that they're proposing, and just, just want that on the record.
And to, and to clarify this, because again, like the communications calls, there's a lot of problems, but there's, there's a fallacy that the county building department tried to stop this development. There's a fallacy that the county building department would not meet with these folks. Met with them a couple months ago. We've got names and times and everything. I talked to the attorney for the developer yesterday and the vice president of the company. I told him, if you've got building plans today, I'll have you a building department, building permit before the end of the week. We turn around building permits, the maximum is one week. If they've got their documentation, they didn't have their plans ready. Now, that's fact. That didn't come hearsay. That didn't come three or four handed. That came from the vice president of the company, said they did not have their plans ready yesterday. But again, I, to say that the county treated them bad, or the county didn't meet with them, or was unresponsive, or any of that kind of stuff is hogwash.
All right. Anything else? All right. If, if not, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, just to reiterate what Mr. Hammond said, we did meet with that engineer for the dollar store months ago in our office for hours, and the, the last part of the discussion was they were headed to the city to discuss tap fees. And we have not heard a word from them until about three weeks ago when I called them, because I had, was cleaning out files and, and seeing where I had some of that on my desk. So, I reached out to the engineer, and they said they were still talking with the city. So, by no means has the building department or planning department had been non-responsive to any of them. They sent an email last week wanting to know was the Field of Dreams Road, a county or a city road, which we replied back. So, we have been in the discussion with them, and their last, they were headed to the city to talk about tap fees, and that's the last we heard of, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thanks, sir.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, one more thing, and just so, I'm not at all opposed to the city increasing their tax base to help at all, but, but we're, we're just not gonna go along with a higher density. If we can get that in place, I'm perfectly fine, but we gotta have that agreement in place.
I agree. All right. Any more questions, concerns? All right. I entertain a motion in there. We work on that interlocal agreement.
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Rich. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further board discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify the motion, that is the motion that we will oppose any future annexations until such time we have an ironclad interlocal limiting the density to what the maximum county density would be. Is that your motion, Chairman?
That's correct. Yes, sir.